So.
Ready?
Ready?
Morning and welcome, everyone. Like it's going on here with the I'm gonna call this meeting to order and I'm gonna ask Supervisor Warren to lead us to the pledge.
And to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hey, we'll move into our next item of business called to the public. Take your name, please.
Thanks.
Good morning Supervisors and everybody glad we could be here. I'm Steve Aman. I'm from Clifton, Arizona, right across the street.
I'm Will Collins.
And he's also from other side. We got you bracketed. We are admittedly not on the schedule because I'm stupid. I got the wrong dates. But I got it straight, so we'll be back. I pray. The reason we wanted to pester everybody this morning is Will and other counterparts of the Arizona Tourism Association have put together a wonderful program at the RV Park on the twenty ninth of March this month called the Spring.
Crisco River Festival.
And we are still.
Saturday.
Saturday, and it's gonna be crowds of million, well, thousands, hundreds, a few of us. As many, probably all the Big Horn will be there because they always show up. Anyway, I know you can't answer ask questions, but if you have any ideas, anything, you know where I am and you can get ahold of us, get ahold of the Tourism Association, help us make it the best ever. You know, we had been doing it there across from the train station or across from the garden there by the soccer field. And we decided we needed a bigger venue. We've got more people, more entertainment. I haven't convinced them to get the Ducky balloon yet, but I'm still working. We have a meeting right after this and I'll still be lobbying them because I think that would be really cool to have tethered Ducky balloon rides, but I may be a group of one on that. We'll see. Thank you so much for letting us interrupt your your meeting. Have a great one. Thanks for all you do. Welcome home.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, so we're gonna have great entertainment. The high school mariachi band is gonna be there from one to two and from three to five, we're gonna have the third or third stone ban that's Joe Cheveria, his band has been playing here since the sixties seventies. So we're gonna have some great entertainment. So.
Great.
Hope to see y'all there.
Can you repeat the date and times?
Uh, March twenty ninth from eleven AM until five PM.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hey, we'll move into our any or anyone else to call to the bottom. I'm sorry.
I'll go first. Good morning. Aaron Miller from the Greenland County Recorder's Office. I just wanted to introduce our full-time employee, Susan Albers. We also have a part-timer, but she's not here because we sent her off to go get notary bonded. So we'll have another notary in our office.
Awesome.
This is our board.
Well, thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome, Susan.
Yes, and thank you for doing that.
Hey, I will.
Yeah. Take care. Was there another?
All right, Reed.
We had one more gentleman over there in the corner here.
He got trouble.
If it's a plea for boots again.
Oh, my goodness. At least you didn't throw him. Gosh, you give me the ugly one, Reed.
I'm not.
The biggest ones.
Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Reed Larson. I'm the survey grant on David Manusa's road crew and in my spare time, I'm the county engineer. I I talked Derek into signing me up for an AI class that I just finished. I want to report on that a little bit. One of the things I learned is one of these AI companies did an experiment with a couple of AI robots. One was on the phone and one was using a laptop. And they were instructed to book a hotel for a wedding and at some point in the conversation, they figured out that each other was an AI chatbot or robot or whatever. And so they switched from English to this language called Jibberlink. And they and it's a series of beeps and tones. And so they finished their negotiations and their conversation in Jibberlink and the humans had no idea what they were talking about. Um, so we may all be switching to Jibberlink. Uh, another example I have for you is recently Google has an AI assisted search function. And when you typed in, how many rocks should I eat each day? Into that AI assisted search, this is the answer you got. According to UC Berkeley geologists, people should eat at least one small rock a day. Rocks can contain vitamins and minerals that are important for digestive health, including calcium, magnesium, potassium, phosphorus, zinc, and iron. Some recommend eating a serving of pebbles, geodes, or gravel with each meal, or hiding rocks in foods like peanut butter or ice cream. So there you go. I I got you started on your back. And as a bonus, these rocks, David Manus dug them out of the arena where the horses and the cattle have been milling around. So they have some extra nutrients in as a bonus. So thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Oh, gosh. I admit I was waiting for the punchline on the AI. All right. Can anybody top that? Anybody else out there? No, here none. We'll go to our next item of business, Public Health Service District. Board of Supervisors will convene as the Board of Directors of the Greenie County Public Health Service District and will reconvene as the Board of Supervisors following consideration of the following item, Consent Agenda.
I still move that we approve the consent agenda as listed.
I second that motion.
Motion has been made in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I have it so ordered. We will now reconvene as the Board of Supervisors and move into our next item of business, the Flood Control District. Board of Supervisors will convene as the Board of Directors of the Greenie County Flood Control District and will reconvene as the Board of Supervisors following the consideration of this following item, Consent Agenda.
I still move that we approve the consent agenda as listed.
I second that motion.
Motion has been made in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I have it so ordered. We will now reconvene as the Board of Supervisors and we will move into our next item of business. Matt Bollinger, Emergency Manager. Floor is yours.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good morning. Um, on February twenty eighth, the Apache Sit Graves Forest went into stage one fire restrictions. I know you guys know this. Um, this was due to, we've had some unusual heat, um, which has cooled down in the last week, um, with lack of precipitation, high winds. I personally don't remember ever going into into fire restrictions in February. It's it's an oddity, but here we are. Uh, generally, when when the Forest Service does that, we coordinate with Marinsey, Clifton, and Duncan Fire Departments, um, as well as with law enforcement to discuss going into restrictions and usually follow. Um, everyone has been on board with that. However, due to the fire restrictions were put in effect about a week and a half ago with the Forest Service, we did have some moisture um, late last week. We have some potential moisture coming uh, later this week. And the Forest Service, I talked with with their their uh, fire management officer yesterday, they're having some discussions. I'll be having some discussions today on whether or not to potentially come back out of those restrictions um, until things heat back up, so to speak. Um, so perhaps uh, this agenda item, we might consider tabling. That would be up to up to you.
Yeah, just a quick question. I I think we want to be in a situation where we don't wait too long. We like to be in alignment with the with the Apache Sit Graves um, because we're very similar and and they have the data to back you up when they go into fire restrictions. I do get that we have had some precipitation and we're hopefully going to get more this week. I I'm grateful. But I I don't, I don't think that it would hurt us to table this until the next meeting. And then revisit this object. If you feel that that is a good suggestion.
Yes, sir. And if things change rapidly, we can always do some rapid things. Through.
And and likewise, I mean, we can table it till or what I would suggest is that we table it until a future meeting. Perhaps we get a series of storms and we're good till May. Perhaps this storm this week fizzles out and we need to be back here in two weeks. And so, um, when when this agenda item came up, we felt confident we should go this direction. Then then the heavens opened up. Sorry.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move that we table agenda item four until a future meeting uh, to continue to be in alignment with the Apache Sit Graves National Forest. So we'll revisit this uh, at a future meeting.
I'll second that motion. Thank you, Ron.
Motion has been made in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I have it so ordered.
Mr. Chairman, members, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Okay, we'll move into our next item of business, Tony Hines, Public Works Fleet and Facilities Manager. Floor is yours.
Good morning, Tony Hines, uh, Fleet and Facilities Manager. Item A is to add our latest blade to the service contract. This one kind of slipped through the fingers when we were doing it originally, so we're adding it now.
Does anyone have a question, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
So that blade's already in the
It's already in the service.
In the fleet?
Yes.
Okay, so this is just being added to the the Empire Service Contract.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, for uh, Mr. Warren's sake, this is a long-term years, even decades-long agreement we've had with Empire. We we have a purchasing agreement through state contracts that works very well for us. But part of that uh, value we get out is making sure that they're serviced regularly and and we've got to make this contract on them.
And just to reiterate that the the major benefit is what we get in trade-in because it has been on that service agreement and that trade-in is incredible.
Trading is much better being on that.
Absolutely.
Correct.
Yeah. Well, I move that we approve uh, to uh, Addendum B for Empire to add the hundred fifty uh, grader to the service contract.
I second that. Thank you, Ron.
Motion has been made in second. There any further discussion?
Yep.
Here none? All for vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I have it so ordered. Item B.
Um, item B is to have D VAC reroute some of the electrical for all the work we're doing on the fairgrounds. Um, Austin's gonna pull up a map so I can tell you what we're gonna do. This is actually like the second phase of the electrical that we're doing. We did. We came from the north side to
Up there? Yeah. So we came in on the three phase that comes in for the south annex and we brought it here to feed the north side of the fairgrounds. So phase two is going to be where we come in by the restroom. The power comes in here by the restroom, so we're gonna reroute this around to the outside of the fence and then run a line over here to a pad mount transformer for the arena. And when we power the second arena that's right here, we'll have power to do that. And from this pole will also come and feed the pole here that has transformers on it that feeds the pole branch and also our other side of the thing. So that'll eliminate all the poles and the lines that are overhead inside the fairgrounds.
So that we have a quote from D VAC on for thirty-five thousand. And since they're the only ones that do the electric in the area.
Should be considered their sole source.
Yeah, so that was my question.
Yeah, no, nobody else will do that.
All right.
I have a quick question, too. Are you planning on, you're planning on installing lights in that second arena, correct?
Eventually, yes. Plus, uh, another crow's nest for announcing sound system, stuff like that.
So so we're gonna beef up that installation for future.
So that's, yeah, future preparations for that.
Correct, yeah.
Correct.
While you're eliminating poles at the same time.
Right.
Perfect.
You have to be.
Great. Do you have a ETA on the lights for the second arena? Because the first one already has lights, correct?
Correct. Yeah, we have no ETA yet. Just in the future plans.
We expect it'll probably come after some of the infrastructure like fields and so forth has been developed. For the primary use of that arena, it will be at at least initially a warm-up arena and a use for some of the slower events at junior rodeos, uh, often which take place in the afternoon. But even then, there's enough bleed over light from the arena to sufficiently light it for kids on the lead line, that kind of stuff. Right now, when the old track was there, people warming up on the track had plenty of light to do that even at night. So so we'll put that lower on the priority list um, after we get some of the other infrastructure done.
So for the junior rodeo, there will be enough light in that uh, second arena for this for this year?
Yes.
Any events that are in that arena should be over before dark.
Good.
Surprise one there. They're aware to rodeo it's that there won't be lights on.
Good, because there were some questions about that on a meeting.
At least initially, right?
Be able to answer those now. Thank you.
Any more, any? Nope. Okay. entertain the motion. You want to do well?
I'll give it a try. All right. I'd like to move that we approve the electrical rerouting for the main lines at the fairgrounds.
Pro- probably add to to D VAC in the amount.
Yeah, to D VAC for what was it now? Uh, thirty-five thousand?
Thirty-five thousand forty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents.
So moved, I'll second that.
Motion has been made in second. Any further discussion? Here we none. Call for vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I have it so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Okay, we'll move into our next item of business. Reed Larson, County Engineer. Floor is yours.
Good morning, gentlemen. This uh, item before you is pertains to the airport. This is our what we call phase one of our drainage project. We've been working on this for quite some time. You may recall that we contemplated uh, doing it in-house and then uh, stepped back from that route due to the workload of our public works crews. Um, so we put it out to bid. And uh, opened the bids a few days ago. Our airport consultant, Dibble, reviewed those bids. We got three responsive bids. And they recommend as you see in their award letter or or their recommendation letter. Um, they recommend awarding to the lowest bidder, which was Spencer Construction in the amount of three thirty-six, four fifty. And we did get already get concurrence from ADOT uh, for this award.
Mr. Chairman, any questions?
So do we, I just had a question. Do we have any experience or do they have any experience with Spencer Construction?
We do not. Um, I I know the young man, I call him a young man that started Spencer Construction. He used to work for Granite and he probably left Granite because Granite moved out of Snell's Pace as evidenced by the roundabout down the road. Um, but he's a great young man. Um, and I have every confidence that they'll do a good job.
Okay, good.
And you said that you, you were referred to Spencer by the
Um, we we just posted this project um, on our website and in the paper and I don't, I didn't reach out to Patrick. Uh, he just, he became aware of the project either through our website or through uh, our posting in the newspaper.
But he's done work for the local area before.
Yes.
Is he out of Stafford?
No, Tucson. So supervisor Warren, he did a lot of work for Freeport. Um, he was involved in a lot of the work that Granite did for Freeport uh, five, six, eight years ago.
Okay, any other other question or concerns?
No. Entertained for motion. I'd like to make a motion that uh, we approved. For the improvements on phase one in the amount of three hundred thirty six thousand four hundred fifty dollars. Plus the uh, uh, up to ten percent. Um, to Spencer Construction.
Alright, I'll second that.
Motion has been made a second. Any further discussion? There none? I'll provoke. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I have it so ordered.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Larson.
Okay. Well, now we'll move into our next item of business. Derek Purpier, County Administrator.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to report, uh, this is again, Ken Gentle or other. Part of our process of developing the fairgrounds park. Um, I I first want to express, I hope she's listening. If not, I hope everybody else is. Um, and then we'll tell her so, but um, Christian Taylor has been instrumental. Uh, she's, she's our, our money person. She's sort of our, our banker, so to speak. She has been so diligent. In finding grant opportunities, not all of them worked out. Um, but not because she didn't work it. It was. It just didn't, we didn't fit the grant criteria very well. Um, we asked her to look for some extra grants out there that would uh, help underwrite the, the fairgrounds project. And she came across the Arizona Parks uh, State Parks Grant. The, the actual grant is a um. Pass through dollars from the National Park Service and the state administers that grant. Um, makes funds available specifically and exclusively for the development of new outdoor recreational opportunities. Um. Like I said, originate from National Park Service, which is a department of the federal government. Um, they do our national parks at Grand Canyon. They also do a lot of the sites around Washington DC. They're in charge of those. Um, it's very broad, very diverse. And so this money is federally sourced, passed down through the states to try and develop sites within the state. Um. The funds that are available are up to one point five million. It's a fifty fifty match. So whatever we would get um. In the grant, we would have to match um. Either dollar for dollar or in kind per dollar. Um, and so. We invited them out, uh, Christian invited them out. We had a meeting on February twenty fifth. They had two representatives from the program. Um, one has been active in it. His whole career is, is about ready to retire. And the other fellow's been at it in Arizona for better than ten years. Uh, very helpful, very insightful. Um, they point out that some park development that's going on in Pima right now, or Pima Graham County uh, was funded by this. We have a park in Greenlee County that was funded by these funds twenty plus years ago. It's the county fields up in Marinsi. Um, and so if you drive by there, you'll see a big sign about all the contributors and one is the, the um. It's actually called the Land and Water Conservation Fund. Um. In that process, it's a very extensive application process. And, and these individuals or others within the state park division will help you with technical assistance. In other words. They, they want to give this money away. They want to fund projects. They will help you. Get that application going. Answer your questions as you go along the way. Um. Like I say, the, the funding can be in kind. They told us, for example, any engineering, any design. That's been done up to this point could be used for match. But any earthwork, you know, uh. Digging, moving dirt, taking down the track, that kind of stuff, that would not be able to be used as match for the grant. You can only use that kind of match after the grant has been awarded. And so um. We've, we've done, I think Tony's calculated in excess of about sixty thousand dollars worth of work to this point on the, on the site. Um.
Already?
Already.
Already.
And, and that involves removing of the track, removing of the, of the uh, super on the, the south side, relocating that dirt for future use. Uh, using or smoothing out some of the parking area. We, we've done quite a bit of work down there. There's still quite a bit to come. Um. But. Having said all that good stuff. The more we listen, the more we ask questions, we began to develop some reservations. Let me walk you through what those are. Um. There are certain requirements. We run into this with state lands and this will be very soon. Because the money is federally sourced, there are some things they would require that we otherwise would not do. You gotta have a full meet, meets and bounds survey, for example. You also have to have a cultural or antiquities survey done. So they'll go over the entire place. Look for any evidence of ancient villages, um. Lines of rocks, you know, anything like that that they might come across. And even if it turns up nothing, that's still something that has to be arranged, paid for, you know, in advance of the application. Um, you have to have the entire project completely. Designed and engineered prior to the application. With selections of potential, like if you wanted to look at playground equipment, they would want. Playground equipment, um, bids, if you will, so that it can, it meets the criteria that is the best and most efficient use of the money. So since you've got to go through the entire design process before you start. For us, that's probably, if we were to do it that way. I don't know, six months to a year perhaps, Reed, to get all that engineering stuff done. Then we will apply. That application process is a year to eighteen months. Once you've got all your stuff ready to go. If, if in that survey, for example, for antiquities, they find something, anything pottery shard. Maybe that pottery shard was brought to the location from someplace else. Then you gotta either uh, mitigate it, preserve it. You've got to do something to make sure that whatever antiquities you may find. Are accounted for and, and if, if necessary, protected. Um, we ran into this on our landfill application. The line of rocks that the CCC put in the nineteen twenties um. Had to be catalogued, has to be accounted for. Um. It also. If you receive this grant money. It places covenant restrictions on the entire parcel of land and they were very open. They said, we want as much as we can get. So they would. They would not just, for example, designate the park where we're putting rodeo arena and baseball field. They'd want the entire fairgrounds footprint. Once that's been designated, it is. Perpetually has to be used for outdoor recreation. Not just for you guys, but your grandkids', grandkids' who are sitting in your seats and making decisions about that. Um. One of the challenges, for example, of county fields in Marinsi is that there's been desires expressed from time to time. To change ownership, to change perhaps use or whatever. But in order to take a piece of land out of this restricted area. You have to nominate a, a separate outdoor recreation area of equal value, assessed value. Um, and say, okay, we're gonna take this hundred thousand dollars worth of land, we're gonna close interest on it and open up a new one someplace else in the jurisdiction. Um. Is it likely that the fairgrounds will ever be used for anything else? Probably not. Um, but for example, Reed and I were talking yesterday, there's the, the northwest corner by our current south annex. That is currently undesignated in our, in our redevelopment plan. Perhaps a board future down the road wants to put office space there or maybe a um. A business builder site. Some counties do that kind of incubator type stuff. Couldn't do it. And so um, that gave us pause and hesitation. Um. Let's see, um. Any changes? So, so for example, let's say in twenty years, rodeo. The Peter Crow has become successful in rodeos outlaw and you can't do that anymore. If we were to repurpose that area again. We would have to consult with Arizona Parks. And, and get their approval on any other um. Amenity we may decide to pursue. One of the challenges, and they pointed this out as well, is that sometimes these things happen. A generation or two of leaders passed when the decision was made. So. There may not be anybody in the room in twenty years who is sitting here today who can remind them, oh, you can't just build a. Whatever, you've got to go through this park. And so they, they've had situations where. Cities and, and counties have just redeveloped something or changed something. And they don't. Tell Arizona Parks, and then it's discovered. One they gave as an example, most frequently was putting a cell tower on property. So they may have a quad softball field somewhere and right in the middle, they decide, hey. ATT put up a tower there. And so there's a little designation that's no longer outdoor recreational use. And so the city's got to go find. Some spot, someplace to replace that land with. It's not impossible, but, but one of the concerns is that over time. You might find yourself or this board, future board may find itself making decisions without even being aware that they've got this obligation. Um, like I say, no, we would essentially halt the project where it's at right now. And wait till all the engineering and design is done until the entire application process is done. Which most likely realistically is probably twelve months at, at best. More likely eighteen months to two years before we can resume work on the project again. Um. Because these restrictions, I, and, and it's one of those things where. Free money's not free. Um, I know Reed and I have discussed several projects over the, the last three or four years. Um, where entities have spent more time and money on the engineering and design than they do on the project itself. Um, one of the municipalities in the Grand County area had taken the approach that your free money is too expensive. We're just gonna save up and do our own projects. And, and they did. They, they've done in streets, they've done different projects. Just on their own coffers. Staff recommendations that we forego this opportunity. Um, I think the, the restrictions going forward in perpetuity forever is, is problematic. I think the time delay in, in getting things done. We're seeing already in real time right now that the cost of some of these projects is going up just because of the tariff wars that have started. In the last ten days. Um. The uncertainty in the market, she probably saw yesterday that the market dropped nine hundred points. When I came in this morning, it was down three hundred this morning. That reflects nothing more than uncertainty and volatility. Um. It could be in twelve months to two years that everything's cheaper. And on the other hand. It could be in. Twelve months to two years, we can't afford much of any of it. And we don't know. And so as a result, our, our recommendation is we forego this funding opportunity. We are already applying for other grants that we will blend with grants we've already received as well as our capital projects funds, the federally sourced dollars that we've dedicated to this. And that we move forward without this grant. It was a big enough opportunity, it up to one and a half million dollars. We didn't feel like we could make the decision without the board's direction on it. But our recommendation is we forego this opportunity.
Is Derek, is there a application fee? I'm, I'm just curious.
I don't think there's an application fee. Um, so, so you could arguably start the project. In fact, we asked them. How many? How many cities and towns and counties apply for this? And, or how many finish the process? And they said only about thirty percent. And so we asked why that is and he said, well, they just, it, it's hard and so they just kind of lose interest. My suspicion is. There's a lot larger number of that that look at the overall restriction and decide. It, that the free money is too expensive.
Chairman, if I might, one of the things uh. Just, just to mention on that, when, when Derek's talking about their involvement, so. For instance, with the secondary, if you guys made a decision to put lights up. We'd have to have the specs and drawings to Arizona Parks before we could put lights up. We put a new bathroom in, if we put new stalls in, anything we do to touch it has to be cleared by parks.
Changing lighting systems from a, an old fountain, incandescent to LED type thing.
From what I gather, it would have to be engineered stamp drawings.
They were very specific, yes.
So besides, besides expensive, it's, I mean, we got handcuffs on and there's a whole from here till eternity, forever, till eternity, yeah.
One of the ways that we're making this project work on a very cost effective basis is we are, we are deciding as projects go. Do we bring in a contractor? Do we do it in-house? Do we hire temporary labor? I've talked to the sheriff, we're gonna be using some inmate labor on parts of the project. But we've got a buffet of, of building options available to us as well as designing and engineering options available to us. That allow us to move more nimbly. And also allow us to, to build at a lower cost.
Well, Mr. Chairman. Just the, I mean. The fairgrounds belongs to Greenlee County, right? It belongs to the residents of Greenlee County. And anytime you enter into an agreement like this with the federal national parks, it's almost like the. The style of the conservation easement, which is happening in view with ranchers across the west. And they think it's a really great idea. They get some tax benefit, but they can't. Build a new barn on their own property, you know what I mean? So there, and I've experienced that and I, and, and so. I just think that the, we had a plan. We had a plan on what we were going to do prior to knowing anything about this. We can find the money and budget ourselves accordingly to be able to do what we need to do, when we need to do it. Um, and I'd rather not. Get into something to where you have to ask to put up a storage shed, you know what I mean? Uh, you know, something simple like that, which is what we would be entering into. Yes, we would get a bunch of free federal money to be able to. Finish the project, but again. That's twelve to eighteen months, two years down the road. Who knows if that funding is gonna be there even at that point?
You know that funny will be there next week.
Right, I know. So I'm just saying, I think we need to proceed with our plan as we have, have talked about it. Um, continue to move forward and, and get what we can get done. And if we don't have money, then we don't do it. But we. We continue to put that into the plan for when we do have money. So. Yeah, I, I would not be supportive in moving forward. That's all.
I, I, we're on. Sentiments, I, I don't like the sunk costs we have to do to move forward. So I mean, many of those costs would already be there. We still may be told no. And uh, I agree, it's, it's of ownership of the citizens of Greenlee County. I would like to be able to be flexible to make those decisions without having to have. Oversight from another group to allow us to do that. So. I'm in complete support of uh, Ron's comments and. Um, would like to have the freedom to make our own choices.
So do you have direction?
We, we have sufficient direction. We, because we have not affirmatively started anything. Um, we will just forego starting this application process. Christian is still looking, she's constantly looking for, for other opportunities that we can supplement and, and uh. Subsidize our, our current efforts. But as you said, we started this project with sufficient money to see it through. Um, without any help. And we've already been able to get some help. And, and we're, we'll be asking for additional help. That help will help us move the project along quicker. Um, but, but um. I, our recommendation, we don't handcuff ourselves.
And I, we greatly appreciate the, the work that she's doing and, and trying to look for those funds. Uh, but I think going forward. Uh, I, my point is that if it, if it impacts our ownership of that land in any way of our ability to. To not only proceed with the project as we're, as we're moving forward and limits us from what we're able to do with our own property, then that's a non-starter for me.
And I echo all those comments and I just wanna. Make a comment because her boss is here, that Christian uh. Uh, she is very good at what she does, absolutely. She is, she's outstanding.
Okay, please tell her that from us.
Yeah.
She'll find us more.
Okay, well then uh, we don't have to make a. Motion or anything, we just uh, direct you to just drop it.
Okay.
Okay, don't start.
Okay. So we'll move into our next item of business. Uh. Discussion in action to consider awarding well drilling contract for additional water supply at the fairgrounds.
So, we knew at the onset of this project that particularly to achieve our, our goals with respect to recreational fields on the north side of the property. We would need more water supply. The water supply we have on site that we've already developed uh, is used for several functions. Well, we, we keep the one field we have there. Modestly green. Um, we can do better. Um. And I say we can do better. That's, that's, there's multiple facets to that. Um. But we also use it to wet the place down. For example, it's not uncommon in September to have a very warm and, and dusty area. But we use it, the water on site also for our own water needs on roads in the area. So we, we have a lot of demand on the road or the wells that are there right now. So um, when we looked at the project, um, early on, we simply said, there's not enough waters. Well. We can drill. We can, we can try and find more water. We've got a very good sized footprint. So we, we located, we believe our best prospects are down in this, this bottom corner here. Um, as you know, this is gone now. This super, the, the track is completely erased. We'll have to Google fly their satellite or get a new picture. Um, the outline of the arena is now set up right about here. This small building, it was a storage building, it used to be the, the vet's office, I think it was. Uh, more recently been used as storage. It is gone. And this uh, first horse stall has been demolished and gone as well. It's in, in not as good a shape. Wasn't really much to salvage. I was impressed. I think they got it down and out in a day. Two days maybe. Um. The first well that has been drilled on site already is, is located right about where my cursor is now. Um. To the back and kind of in between where these two buildings were. The second one, we believe should be located about where my cursor is now, closer to this um. Chip, you know, chip track area. Um. We want to go much, much deeper than, than we have in the past. Um. All of the wells on our property right now are roughly in the one twenty to one fifty range depth wise. And they produce, I think the lowest producing well is about eight gallons a minute. We've got one that is thirty one. Thirty, and then we've got the, the wells here. The one we just drilled is looking to be about twenty gallons a minute. And then the one here on the south side where the tanks are, it produces around fifteen or sixteen gallons a minute. It does not produce enough to refill all the tanks overnight. We have reason to believe that we, we can find more water deeper, and so we're gonna try a well that'll go through that one twenty, one fifty range. And go down, we proposed to go as deep as six hundred feet. We reached out to the only well drillers we know in the area, fortunately, one of them has shown up here today, Hydro. They're here, they are the group that, that drilled our well at the Womond Park, it's a great well. The, the well we just finished drilling was done under, is it Sonoda? What's the license? Patagonia. The fellow who actually does the work is a fellow named Benny Diaz. And then we also contacted the well drill out of the Wilcox area that I was alerted to by some of the farmers down in that, that area. Asked each of them to develop a well. Two of these drillers, and I'm gonna, I'm not a well person, so if I slaughter this, please don't be offended here. But they are, they're much more technical, I would call them engineered type wells. So for example, if, if you locate water on your way down at a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty feet. They can note that, keep drilling down, maybe they hit another pocket at three hundred and maybe another pocket at six hundred. These wells could isolate those waters. And, and create slots in the pipe after the well is drilled, that would allow those, those to drain into the bottom of the well and pump batter it. They could, if necessary, for example, isolate a body of water that is high in arsenic or some other noxious chemical. As we looked at this, I'm not sure we need that technical of a well. What we need is water to put on fields and roads and dirt. And so our, our recommendation is that we go with the lowest cost provider here, which I believe is the Diaz pump and the Patagonia, under the Patagonia license. There are other applications. For example, we talked about if we ever get to the point where we're drilling wells in the area of the Y. For potable water and human consumption, an engineer designed well makes a whole lot more sense. Because people are gonna be drinking it, in this case, this will never be hooked up to consumable outlets. People can't drink the water, it would be. Used solely for irrigation and, and wetting of surfaces. So our recommendation is that we go with, with the low cost bidder on this one.
I have a comment. Wasn't there a well out there in, in, at the fairgrounds that? We thought was down, they told us it was down and stuff, and we're actually pumping water out of it after all? Isn't there a well out there?
Probably well three where they found us.
Well, there was, there's two, we, we had well three that had some stuff that. It was originally drilled for potable water and was not suitable for it, so for years it was just kept off. We brought that back into, into production for exclusive use on roads and wetting dirt. Another well, what we call well number one, we believed had collapsed. And, and actually this well driller went and looked at it and has made it productive again. And that was Benny Diaz as well. We drilled another well next to it.
That's probably the one that, that I'm commenting on, because I thought there was a well out there that. We were gonna basically abandon, and it turned out that it's usable.
We were able to rehabilitate it.
Water out of it, right?
We are.
Yeah.
And we drilled a well very close to it. Our well, which is that we talked to, said we drilled the wrong place, and they're probably right, because it doesn't produce as much as the one that's what, ten or twelve feet away?
Okay, so we have, we have how many wells pumping water right now?
Five, well, the slightest one is not, it's, it's ready to be plumbed, but it's not in production yet.
Okay, all right, wow, I didn't realize we had five, okay.
Who's best answer question on, on the bits? You got him or Tony or?
Our best person is probably Reed.
Yeah, just, just quick, because I'm looking at the Diaz pump and well repair. I mean, I, I don't correlate a lot of the quotes on the cover. To the actual quotes attached, but I noticed that on the Diaz bump and, and well. That they're only calling out five hundred, eight inch steel casing, five hundred, assuming feet. But we're talking about a six hundred foot well. Is that an error or am I ignorant on those?
So he provided a flow based on type of, but we standardized it on six hundred, so we took his prices. And converted them to per foot price and then by that by six hundred.
Okay. Okay, so, okay, then that helps.
So he's good to six hundred. Diaz is good to six hundred. The numbers that you see before you are, are giving us six hundred.
Six hundred, okay. That helps me.
Okay, any other questions, concerns? Not entertained for motion, let's try a will.
I saw a motion. That. We award the drilling contract to Diaz. Well drilling. At the amount of. Forty-five thousand.
I want to say fifty-three, nine hundred, right?
Fifty-three thousand, ninety-nine hundred dollars, right?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made a second, is there any further discussion? And I'll propose all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, have it so hard. Okay. We move into our next item of business. Budget work session.
This is, as we know every year, we begin this process. This is our opportunity to set sort of the grand parameters, if you will, of what we're gonna try to. The outside parameters, some of the outside parameters are budgeting processed. We've got a huge head start. I'm gonna say we because Renee's part of our team. But Renee has given us a huge head start on this year's budget. He's been chipping away at it while also doing our, trying to get our audits up to speed. He's taken on Herculean load of, of doing this, and so much of the, the initial work on budgets has already been done. And so he's got all, I think all of the general fund initially filled out. But some of these things we're gonna talk about today need to be plugged in to know where, where to put the. Where to put the emphasis financially. I'm gonna talk a little bit later about our revenue picture, we are still up about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And, and we're, we're getting a better feel for where our trend for next year may be. The first question we, we face every year is where would you like us to start as far as the tax rate?
Under that.
Under that, so for supervisor Warren's benefit, Arizona counties. You go way back to California's Prop thirteen, where they limited property tax. In, in their state, Arizona followed, but with a far more sophisticated system. And it's been tweaked ever since then, so there are two rates that are caps. One is a soft cap and the other is a hard cap. So the soft cap is what they call the truth in taxation rate. And the board can set any property tax rate up into that line. Without having to vote on it, not have a hearing, you can simply say the tax rate is gonna be under the TNT rate or up to the TNT rate. You can exceed that rate to the truth in taxation zone. And you can set any tax rate in that zone up to the hard cap, which you cannot go above, no matter what. That that second zone requires that you put a notice in the paper, that you notice a public hearing, people get to come and comment, and you have to vote on that. There's a line within that zone that if you exceed it, you have to have a unanimous vote. And so we traditionally have, have stopped at the TNT rate. It has been sufficient for our needs. We have not needed to exceed that except I think one, maybe two times last twenty years. It's been sufficient. This is an important component of our overall revenue picture. It's not the only important one, our big load carrying revenue is our shared sales tax. But what we'd like from you is at least preliminary direction of whether you'd like to have us build a budget based on the TNT rate. Or should we plan on exceeding it?
Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
Obviously, if we can keep it under the TNT rate, that's my preference. But as long as we can all obviously provide the services that we need, provide the, the. Equipment that we need, you know, as far as roads, as far as ambulances, which is the hot topic. So if we can still find a way to do that, still reward our employees, all that good stuff. And stay under the TNT rate, that's my preference. If we get to that point and we do all of these things that we want to do. And we have sufficient revenue to be able to do the part, you know, at the fairgrounds, things like that. And it exceeds TNT rate, then, then we, you know, we just need to know that for sure, but right now, I don't know what I don't know, so. And until we get valuation, we, you know, things like that, then.
And we will, of course, have several of these sessions as they go along, as much begins to take shape, the other thing that. As we know from our visits in Washington, looks like secure rural schools will be present for the current budget. Not so confident in next year's federal budget, so we, you know, that's roughly a three hundred thousand dollar hit to our budget. In the current year, our shared sales tax revenues would have covered that gap and, and then some. But we will build at least initially, unless someone tells us otherwise, we will build initially based on the TNT rate.
Yeah.
So in the last twenty years, you've had to vary from that twice?
Once or twice, and only, only by a little bit. And those were in, in predictably low recession years where our shared sales tax was, was in a nosedive.
I would like you to stay below the TNT rate if that possible.
Okay.
Stay there and we'll see how it ends up.
We just had our annual health insurance pool, our health pool annual conference where. We looked at all of the various offerings we have, the rates attached to those offerings. There will be a few new offerings allowed this year. And when the actuaries did the actual cost on these, we'll actually save a little bit of money. The initial actuary recommendation was for, I believe, a seven percent rate increase.
I've been hired.
It may have been higher than that, we have healthy reserves in the health insurance pool, and this is a, this is. Six counties, six smallest counties, Apache, Grand, Greenlee, Gila, La Paz and Santa Cruz. This, this health trust has done remarkably well. They, they willing to do innovative things, for example, if you're in Nogales, you have access to a, a health. PPO provider system in Mexico, and many of those residents use that. This year, we also approved a, a different approach to wellness. That we hope will offer some better results for those struggling with diabetes, weight issues and, and related health problems. Your average medical increase across the nation averages a seven percent, and it, and it's impervious to inflation rates. It rises in recessions, it rises in good times, and it's pretty steady. We had a pretty low claim rate, or at least the high dollar claims. So most of the stuff is covered very easily in the actuarial gathering of premiums, and we covered that. Every once in a while, there'll be a member, and it could be anywhere in any one of six counties. That has a medical condition that is extremely costly. Three, four, five of those a year can change our rates, because these exceed, you know, two hundred, sometimes they exceed a million dollars. We've not had a lot of those in the last year. The other is that we're seeing an increase in the demand and the prescribing of specialty drugs. So all those things, the humeras, the. Can't think of all, I don't know who comes up these names, but you see the ads for them all the time. These are becoming more, there's more demand, the, the ads are pushing people to doctors to prescribe these, we cover some. We have a, a contract with what they call a, a prescription benefit. Essentially, they run our prescription benefits. So even on some of these high dollar drugs, because we are as a pool, we get discounts or rebates. So if someone gets a Humira prescription, that may be a thousand dollars a month, we may get seven hundred dollars of that back in a rebate. They've been very successful working on that. There are also things called biosimilar drugs beginning to come on the market, this is where they are not. The exact drug, so the patents haven't, you know, run on some of these drugs. But very similar drugs are coming on and they're beginning to be mass produced, which will soon, and is already starting to see the price of these things come down a bit. We discussed the GLP ones, this is the Ozempic, Wegovy, Monjaro and stuff that were developed originally for diabetes, but have become very popular in the weight loss space. Two reasons that we've not covered them, one is that they simply haven't been out in the market long enough. They're finding that most folks who do this stay on them for about four months to five months. The gastrointestinal issues associated with them are more than most people can take for very long. The weight loss is rapid, but it doesn't stay off. So these companies are essentially saying, yeah, your solution, you stay on this forever, and then you don't bring your weight back. They're also doing something from their point of view, which is interesting marketing strategy, and they're saying, they've done the studies and say, for example. Wegovy, a weight loss drug, also treats sleep apnea. There's a correlation between weight and sleep apnea, although it's not a one for one. But they're saying, because this is now approved for sleep apnea, if you accept Wegovy on your. Drugs available for weight loss, you must also make your, make it available to your members for sleep apnea. And they're expanding the uses for that, so you may have, for example, ten percent of your, of your senses that needs help with weight loss. Another five percent with sleep apnea, another five percent with, I don't know, adult acne, whatever it is. And, and you end up with these very expensive drugs going for a lot of different things. But like you say, there are, there are some conditions, it can be severe, we learned from our pharmacist that. Paralytic or paralyzed intestines, it's not uncommon. You can have bleeding in the GI tract, there's some other things that are happening. And the whole drug is not mature enough to see where this settles out. So we took a wait and see approach, which will save a lot of money. The long and short of it is, we adopted a four and a half percent rate increase. And that's for all six counties. Every county handles that rate increase differently. So I put some up here, one thing we hear not infrequently is, well, my health insurance is gonna eat up all of my wage increase. So if you look here, the number in yellow there at the top is if a person were making forty-five thousand dollars and, and the board decided on a two percent wage increase. That may be one, maybe two, maybe three, maybe six, maybe nothing. But for example, if there was a two percent wage increase, your paycheck would go up by thirty-four dollars and sixty-two cents every two weeks. The cost of insurance, if you were just on single employee coverage, even at a four and a half percent increase in your health insurance cost, it would only take a dollar ninety-five out of your paycheck. The county, on the other hand, we're paying ninety-four percent of the health insurance cost for our employees. That would be thirty, thirty dollars and forty-six cents to the county. Family, family coverage, you'd still have thirteen dollars and seventy-one dollars more being taken out of your paycheck. County's cost for that additional cost would be sixty-three dollars and eighteen cents. I believe Austin was saying that our, our cost is still below our neighbors up on the hill for health insurance. What we have done for several years, since I've been back in this position. Is we've split that equally between the employer and employee. So our cost will go up by four and a half percent, and the employees' cost will go up by four and a half percent. Some counties have absorbed these raises every year, so their employees didn't feel any of it. So that their percentage of coverage is getting higher and higher over time. Our recommendation would be that we keep that same split between employer and employee, but that's, that's your decision. If you're comfortable with that, we will build that into our spreadsheets. If you'd like to change that, that percentage, we, we happen to build that in as well.
I think, I think that's a fair division to share the cost, you know, with the employees.
Same here.
I agree, I agree.
Charitable donations, we have, I think it's four. Various donations that we donate to, we, we have this discussion once or twice every budget year. These are, these are groups that directly impact our most vulnerable population, primarily our elderly. And our disabled population. From a, from a purely dispassionate fiscal point of view. The more we of our elderly we can keep in our own homes, it costs the county less money. And so we're incentivized to help in that, this is meals on wheels, this is transportation. And, and that's where the bulk of our charitable nations go, we also do some stuff that, that assist disabled adults. And, and we have built those into our. Our budget all along. We get requests almost every year. and they range from assisting with a local festival to, um, infrastructure costs for other nonprofit organizations in the county. Um, we've had veterans, libraries, uh, festivals. We've had economic development requests or show. Yeah, we, we've had all different kinds of things, and so we focused always on our, our charitable donations to disabled and, and elderly. But we have occasionally on usually a one-off basis, and this board has been very good, say, look, we'll get you some money now, but don't come back, build from there. We have not specifically budgeted for those other requests. Sometimes we don't know if they're coming until we're well under the budget year. But we, we could take a different approach of building somewhat of a charitable reserve, um, to handle some of those requests. Some of these requests, and, and we, I put it there, we typically focused on those things that have a clear nexus to county government. Uh, so for example, we focused a long time on economic development, so putting money towards symbiotic economic development makes some sense. The, the safe house, um, that directly benefits again another vulnerable population in our community that needs protection when they need it, so. Our proposal would be to, to do the charities that we always do. And then if you would like this too, we could build in a reserve. How much of reserve? We would probably come back to a later meeting and say, it looks like our budget will allow us to budget X number of dollars in that reserve. If it turns out to be ten dollars and fifty cents, that's going to be the limit of our charitable giving. If it's fifty thousand, then, then we may or may not spend it all, but that may be a way to, we could handle these off-season requests, um, as they come.
Do we, or is there, is there a reserve right now in, in this budget?
We have no reserve. A reserve in this budget.
Okay. I, I, I thought that I remembered a seven, like, you know. Alright, so I think build it on, personally build it on that. I, I don't think we even exceeded that this year.
Uh, we have not. We will probably get a request that would exceed that, I think, a little bit later. I, 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 I've, I've been in talks with a, an organization that would like help from the county. Um, that we've instructed to go out and try again and a little harder to shake the trees of some of the other, um, organization, United Way, for example. And so, but I expect that they will come back and it may seem better.
Okay, well, we can decide.
When we set that reserve, is it going to stay that way for the calendar year?
It would stay that way for the calendar year.
And then the next year, we would have the opportunity to maybe upper, lower, or increase or decrease that?
Yes.
So it would be flexible, but we're setting it for that year mark.
Correct, and I, I would suggest that, that as an organization, we stay disciplined of where we do that. Uh, we learned a couple of years ago, and we've learned it ever so often, that once people figure you're giving out money, it might just get longer. And, 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 and that's not to disparage any group. Everybody who's ever come has had a good reason, and they have a, a good objective to try and accomplish, but, but we do not collect taxes to to help every good thought in the community, so I would say.
Just fiscal year, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Yes, I believe I was wrong.
Yes, so that's, that's, um, June to July. Um, but I would say that we, we keep our focus on those that have a clear nexus to county government and those that have a, a, um, public service focus.
Well, I think we've always, we've always wanted to give organizations a hand up, right, when they, when they need it, but we've also been very clear that, that this is not the handout every every year, that they, we want them to be self-sustainable, and so uh, but I think you have some knowledge of, of a request that might be coming, and so maybe you could present that with that request. At that time, and we'll see what that.
And when it matures, I will certainly present that.
We want to be.
It does. Yeah, it does fit the criteria, but it's, it's something that, that, uh, is not mature ready yet. And, and to their credit, I mean, the, the different groups we've worked with, um, when we've said, look, we'll get you seed money, get started, don't come back. They haven't. They, they've spawned their own thing and run their, and, and they've done really, really well.
I think that's good to be been clear on the message, right?
Yeah, exactly. Exactly, so. Alright, with that, then we will build in a reserve as well, and, and we may come back with a recommendation for a different number, depending on how the rest of the budget shakes out. Premium rates. Last year, we moved our premium rate for the first time in a decade or more, um, and that was in response to, uh, increased travel costs. As we all know, right now, Phoenix may be the worst place in the nation to travel because everyone wants to get out of the weather and come watch baseball. Um, they, as of January twenty-seventh, I just found this last night, they raised their, for example, their lodging rates in the Phoenix area uh, during this period of time, um, up to, I think it's two twenty-nine a night, um. You can hardly get a Motel Six, you know, with a, a point five rating for less than two hundred bucks a night. Um, and we do not expect our employees to stay in every cockroach-infested, you know, high-crime-ridden hotel in Phoenix. Um, but, but in this case, um, we set our rates last year for sixty dollars a day. The current rate for, for Phoenix in-state is seventy-six dollars a day. That's the breakfast, lunch, uh, dinner breakout. We we can leave it as it is and, and, and go with that, or we can adopt the new state rates. Same as with mileage, we set our rate, we raised it for the first time in a long, long time, up to sixty-two and a half cents a mile. The state in January moved their reimbursement rate to sixty-seven cents a mile. Um, we believe that the, when we moved up last year, it was a bigger jump than this. Um, I think the marginal cost was about ten thousand dollars, is that right, Renee? Of increased travel costs. Um, overwhelmingly, our folks are using county cars, overwhelmingly, they're, they're making good decisions. I, I think, uh, particularly our, um, electors are acutely aware that, that what we spend is available for public, you know, inspection. And so, but we would anticipate the budget impact in the coming fiscal year to be in the ten to fifteen thousand dollar range if we raise both rates to the current state rates on per diem and mileage. Uh, so the question would be, do we want to adjust to the old standard? I have not heard of people complaining, they just can't get a bite based on the current per diem.
But I, but personally, I like staying concurrent with the state rate, you know what I mean, just aligned uh, as we've talked about, the, you know, the National Forest and, and staying with, with their fire restrictions, et cetera. I like to be in line with the state rate, that's my personal opinion.
You'll notice as well, particularly at this time of year, um, well, the whole year, hotels in the area are very aware of the state rate, and they will set their rates accordingly. You can get lower rates in the middle of June. Um, but for most of the year, they're acutely aware of the state rate, and they adjust their rates accordingly, so. Any other direction for the other board members?
You good? With staying with the state rate?
Mr. Warren as well?
I'm good with staying with state rate. That would, the state, staying with the state rate would include the higher mileage and the higher mileage, right?
Yes, we, we would, we would tack to the new guidance given by the Department Administration on January twenty-seventh. About a month ago. Capital projects, um, we will be in the process of developing tier-one, uh, projects. We will, it will look a lot like last year's tier one. We've been able to make a lot of progress, but we haven't got all those projects done. Uh, we will likely be hesitant to recommend new projects to bring on board, but we will present them. We will look at our, so, and again, for Mr. Warren's, um, insight, uh, about three years ago, we moved away from simply a list of projects that we wanted to do, some were aspirational, some were and then some would pop up mid-year that we didn't plan for. We wanted to move to a more planned approach to our capital spending. As we have attempted to identify projects that we think that we can get done or mostly done in the current fiscal year. Um, we're still fine tuning that process. Uh, and sometimes we've been more ambitious than, than we thought, you know, we should have been. Um, tier-two projects are those that we're planning out three to five years out, so we're doing planning, we're doing uh, scoping of those projects, and then tier-three are typically those projects that are more aspirational. We don't want to lose sight of them, um, but we don't intend to make meaningful progress then in the current fiscal year. Um, a capital project is generally speaking, has a, a value of a hundred thousand dollars or more in a five-year life. Uh, so that could be, uh, a large vehicle, that could be, um, a building, that could be a baseball field. I'm going to suggest that we earmark some funds for ambulances, uh. Tony has been able to locate a provider that's going to bring out an actual unit tomorrow. Um, and we've had such a hard time getting ambulance, we may tell them, just leave it here. And we will find a way to pay for it. But, but our ambulance fleet is aging, our, our maintenance department has done an outstanding job. Um, and, and we're working on new models to try and address upgrading without the two, two and a half, almost three-year wait. Um, but we have typically funded those through our Public Health Services District. However, um, costs continue to rise and our ability to raise revenue is capped. We are at our revenue limit on, on that Public Health Services District, so we may wish to consider some capital funding set aside for ambulance acquisition. Uh, we'll come to that after tomorrow's meeting and as we develop other option. Uh, we'll be meeting with, uh, Heal Health Resources, our ambulance service provider, those who run the ambulances and start addressing some of those issues. Um, we would invite other officials and department heads to propose, uh, capital expenditures. I know our elections director is likely going to come back and say, we need a new central count, count machine. Um, we nursed our machine through this election, and I say nursed because we had to have our maintenance guy come out and, and tweak it. I think just before the primary, just going general, right? Um, it's, it's old, the, the company doesn't service it anymore, um. It's like any other, you know, at some point, you know, carmakers don't service their old cars. And so, um, we're somewhat hesitant because there's some legislation right now that, that may affect how we do elections. Um, but we probably need to invest in election equipment. Um, other departments will make other suggestions, electeds may have suggestions of what, um, and we encourage them to do that. There's, of course, we get, uh, deeper into our budget, we will, we'll have a session on where we should set our tier one, two, three projects. So I don't really need direction on that, just simply remind you where we're going and, and then ha- ask you to keep ambulance in the back of your mind.
Just a quick question, you know, i- i- legislation doing away with voting centers, you know, we've talked about that, and, and, and as a result of that, that would be that we would have to have ten polling locations uh, through Greenland County rather than the three that we have now. Um, would we have to then buy additional equipment or spread that equipment out to those ten different locations? Um, I, I don't know.
It's an excellent question.
That, that's what, that's my concern is that, eh, you know, yes, we need the, the centralized, you know, voting machine, whatever. But then are we going to have to also buy additional equipment for the possibility of ten different voting locations across the county versus three?
Probably.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. And, and, and because of the way that is structured with a thousand-person cap at each precinct, we could have no more than a thousand in our precinct, but we may also have several precincts with two hundred or three hundred because of the caps.
Right.
Um, and so, um, and, and to be honest, uh, Bianca and I were on a call yesterday along with Erin, uh, and her staff. Nobody knows exactly what that looks like yet.
Yeah.
Because it, it depends how you spread your people out. But yes, we may have to invest in some more onsite polling machines. But since the bulk of, of elections are still run through early ballots, we count all of those with the central couch.
Right. Yeah, so that's, that's an assume, we need to replace that.
Yes.
But I'm thinking as well. Uh, and I don't know, I don't know enough about legislation to say, is there, is there mileage associated with that as well? I mean, yeah. You, you have to have a polling location for every one thousand residents, but you put, you put one, you could have one at the blue and eagle, right, uh, or up your, up regal, because you'd have
Which we do.
Forty in one and twenty in the other, you know?
Which we do now, yes.
Yeah.
But, but could we force them into a single precinct?
Right.
Probably not.
Right.
Um, but we may also have a, a, a voting precinct in Franklin and one in Duncan, and one out towards the elementary school. And one in Sheldon and York, and just work your way up the county that way, um, and those may or may not have a thousand people in each of them.
You'd have to have two or three of them, right?
At least.
Yes.
At least.
Those are the things that are bouncing in my head, I just, I just want to keep.
Well, and, and the costs, I mean, our costs are relatively small. We talked about it yesterday, Maricopa County talked about having eighty-nine thousand different ballot styles. Eighty-nine thousand, they already have like thirty thousand, something like that, it's a huge number. But it would, it, I mean, so ballot style is that in, in this part of town, I can vote for this school board member and that JP and this judge and that county supervisor. But I go three streets over, and it's a different school district.
Mm-hmm.
And so because those precincts are down to a thousand people, they would have over three thousand precincts. You, you're going to have.
Let's hope that legislation doesn't pass.
Well, and we'll talk about that in our next section, about what we want to do about that, but
Okay.
planning ahead, we are, we're going to need probably a central count machine, but there are probably other needs in the county that we will, that will bubble through the budget process.
Right.
And I believe that's the guidance we need for now to get us started. Like I say, we've got, got the, the backbone of the budget built. But, um, with that guidance, then we can, we can start filling out a lot of the, the critical pieces there.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate that direction.
Thank you, okay. We'll move into our next item of business. Derek again, and Bianca on the county and state budget and legislature.
Left and, left and dark.
Left and dark.
Alright. Um, you are now all familiar with this, this chart. We see it, um, every month. You'll see that, um, our, uh, monthly shared sales tax revenue was up again, not as, not as dramatically as last month. But four hundred ninety-four thousand is a, almost seventy-five thousand, seventy thousand more than we had projected at the beginning of the budget year. That's a good thing, obviously. That means that our projected revenue from, just from shared sales ta- sales tax revenue is six hundred forty-seven thousand dollars above projection. That's not lots, but it's better than being six hundred thousand dollars below projection.
And we projected low.
We did on purpose.
Yeah.
Yeah, so our projection was five point one million, that was based on four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars per month. Um, and you'll see that, that we've exceeded that in most months. But we did that conservatively on purpose, because it's easier to budget with less money than to overshoot. We, I heard a horror story, and one of the, the, I went to a county administrator exchange, ID exchange meeting while at the conference in DC. Tremendously informative, but one of the problems that some of these counties have done is they've overextended. And one county in Ohio in particular, I think, has a hundred million dollar project that was a congressionally designated spending project, so that was an earmark. Those things, you have to spend the money first and get reimbursed. They're about halfway through this project. They spent half the money and their funding has dried up. It is so serious for them that they have now consulted an attorney to sue the federal government for breach of contract. We don't budget that way, and thank goodness we don't. Um, we have applied for a couple of congressionally designated spending things, and one that we'd applied for, we ended walking away from because we couldn't see a way to win. Um, and so we will continue to budget conservatively uh, and, and make it go from there. On our county sales tax side, uh, it's a similar show. Um, we're up a little bit, only about ten thousand dollars over projected revenue. Get that a little bit bigger. Up at nine thousand, or, yeah, nine thousand nine hundred dollars over our projections. We projected, um, one point four. If we continue, we'll be at the same pace, we'll end up at about one point four. As you can see, these revenues are much more volatile. They don't represent as, as a biggest stream of income for us. Uh, this is our half-cent local sales tax. Um, this is not, this is just based on what is sold only in Green Lake County. Our shared sales tax is based on gross sales receipts statewide, and then divvied up for us based on our, um, assessed value, and so. But again, this is a positive number, um, we can live with breaking even on this one, and, and we're okay.
Can you move your, okay, thank you.
Put it right there in the middle.
I was looking down at something else and then.
Yep, so we, we received a hundred fifteen thousand now. Again, by way of sort of historical understanding, this is money that was collected from merchants in December reported to DOR in January and dispersed in February. We find out about it in March, but this is a February distribution. So there's a lag in, and we get that. So the actual end of the year, what we received in June, we won't actually get that final number until the first few days in July. Okay? Do you need me to make it bigger? Um, we'll calculate the quarterly marks, uh, after next, after the March receipts are in. But the long and short is, we're, we're in pretty decent shape. But the long short is, we're, we're in pretty decent shape and glad to answer any questions.
Any questions or concerns?
Nope.
Okay, move on.
All right. Legislatively, all the bills. That were, that survived the original House of Origin and made it into the opposite house. We can turn the lights on now. And so. They are now being assigned committees. We've been monitoring, I've been monitoring ones. A lot of them don't have a lot of effect on us. For example, there's a a kind of a debate going on about mother-in-law cottages and whether they should be allowed. We were glad to have mother-in-law cottages and father-in-law cottages and next-door neighbor cottage, whatever it is. But there is one that that we are keeping close track on. It's the one we, it's, it's, there, there's a bill, House Bill. Get the number. But it's the very same as what they call a House continuing resolution. The resolution is one that would go to the ballot for voters to vote on. And that is the one that breaks us up into precincts of no more than a thousand people. It creates some other headaches and problems. That would, would make the elections far more difficult for us. It was to be voted on today in House Rules Committee and then go to the floor later this week, but the Senate President is out this week. So and they're going to need every one of the Republican votes to get there. I don't think any Democrat will vote for it. And so. The push is to, and and this is a bill that that it has kind of a grassroots feel. You'll hear some legislators saying, my constituents want to do this this way. Everybody believes this is pushing toward an eventual hand count solution, because surely you can count a thousand ballots. Every way you look at it, that doesn't work as well as machine counting, but that's the push. And so you have some people who are diehard believers that elections were stolen or rigged or something and they're they're pushing hard. You have some people in the Republican caucus who are, they don't want to upset their base and so they're, they're kind of standing down. What we've got to find is three or four courageous people who will say, this is a bad idea. So in that front, I will draft a letter later today. But we may need to go find our senator and and sit down and and have a sandwich with him and say, let us help you understand why this is a problem. For Greenlee, this is a particular problem, inasmuch as we have a large number of our voters. Who will vote on their way to or out of their job at the mine. And they may live in Duncan and vote Marancy or Clifton. They may live in Clifton and vote Marancy. Not very many people leave Marancy, go to Duncan. But if you leave your house and you don't vote in your precinct in Duncan, you get up to Marancy and say, oh, I want to vote. You'll go to Marancy and they'll give you a ballot, you'll vote it and it will never be counted. Because you got to go back to your precinct to vote. And I think the sponsors of this legislation have underestimated just how upset voters across the state, certainly in our county, we're going to come. Many of them, their own constituents of their same party. So I will be in contact with you. We, we may need to run, run our center down and say, can we explain to you how this plays out in our county? But I'll also draft a letter for your approval and signature.
Good, good.
Oh, now I'm not too concerned. They haven't really started budget discussions at the state yet. They're like we are in moderately good position. They have a surplus. Not big enough to give away two billion dollars like we did a couple of years ago. But they should be in decent shape.
And he, he liked steak a lot more than than sandwich.
This is true.
Yeah.
We, we can find a good one.
That one to go.
So we have no idea in that on the voting one. That'll be decided later.
Yes, and it could be done in one of two ways. One of the things that was talked about yesterday is pushing them to fund it. Because as you say, we would have to buy more machines, we'd have to hire more poll workers, we'd have to find new voting locations. I don't know where we begin to look for some voting location. We used to use the York Homemakers Club long before Bianca joined the county. It, it doesn't exist anymore, it's gone. So we'd have to find ourselves a location. Many churches do not want, schools don't want, it's disruptive, voting going on at their location. Other places of parking or ADA accessible ramps and so forth. There's a lot of problems. So one of the pushes is say, if you, if you're going to go with this, then fund it. And make the voters vote on the funding as well. Yeah, the the cost to to Maricopa County. I would never have thought you could rent every box truck in the Phoenix area, but they talked about not being able to find enough box trucks to get their ballots out. You'd have to print one hundred and one percent of every ballot style that you devoted in that precinct. So you end up with just tons of extra paper laying around that people don't use. Yavapai County goes down to Phoenix and tries to steal some of the box truck supply. For Yavapai County, because they're competing with with Maricopa to hire box trucks. It's, it's a bizarre thing. But in any event. We're going to want to work that. The other one I would mention is there's a a couple of bills moving through that would affect public meetings. And public records. The one public record seems to be losing steam. And a lot of us, how quickly you respond and how you respond, we are meeting most of the criteria already. The ones that challenge us are like election year, public records requests to the reporter's office that are huge and voluminous and you have to go through and read back names and addresses and those security numbers. But the public meeting one likewise, for example, the the thing is right now, they they want to mandate that everybody have a call to the public. Or if you have one, you have to have it at the first of the meeting and it has to stay open for half an hour. In some places, that makes a lot of sense. I would suggest that's what we do, our coffee and donuts, because we seldom have a half hour's worth of call to the public. We could, but we don't usually. But that one seems to be gaining some momentum, so we may have some changes to our public meeting. I think we could adapt to whatever they're requiring. We're doing, we have our call to the public first already. We could probably adapt to it. But that's, and I think that's in response to some public meetings that have kind of got off the rails. And and some places down in the valley in particular, they put their call to the public at the end, so that they hope that three hours or four-hour meeting will kill the interest. People wait around for a long time. That's never been our practice. So, and that's my legislative report.
Awesome. Thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
Okay. Bianca, what was yours?
This week, Marancy School started their spring break. March fourteenth is the county managers meeting. The rest of. These coming Fridays will be LPC. Next Monday, St. Patrick's Day, Duncan does start their spring break. March eighteenth, Small Counties ECO. On the twentieth, Thursday, CSA Board Meeting and Greenlee County will be hosting that. Our next board meeting this month will be on the twenty-fifth. That's all I have for the month of March. April four, LPC meetings. And then all Fridays for the rest of the month. Our first board meeting will be April eighth. County Manager on the eleventh, Small Counties and ECO on the sixteenth. CSA on the seventeenth and our second board meeting will be on the twenty-second. That's all I have for April. What do you have anything to add? Going into May, first board meeting is on the sixth, County Managers on the ninth. May fourteenth, Small Counties and ECO. May fifteenth, CSA. Our second board meeting for the month of May will be the twentieth. May twenty-second, Marancy and Duncan Promotions are on that Thursday. And high school graduations for Marancy, Duncan on the twenty-third.
Don't start crying.
And then Memorial Day is May twenty-sixth, our offices will be closed.
Were we hosting a ER?
And I would like to mention that it is next Wednesday night, the the nineteenth. So the Small County Forum. Is hosted by one of the seven smallest counties, this group of seven counties. And each county rotates as to who hosts the dinner. We hosted a couple of months ago, Santa Cruz asked if we would switch them out. They had a a thing going on in their county and they didn't think that they could host it. We agreed to do so. So we'll get two out of them. I'll go back to Jesus and say, you owe me two dinners now. But we would like, if you can make it, to be there to host that. Chairman Gomez, I think, will be there already. But we we developed the agenda and we're also run the meeting and so forth. What I've been busy with Craig Sullivan about. Is Greenlee County has been trying to elevate the substance of these meetings. You know, we we discussed the lawsuit a couple of times so that our colleagues understand what's going on. And and I've discussed the idea with him that I'll discuss with the chairman as well. About how we can maybe encourage these meetings to become more substantive, more interactive with our legislators. So that that we can begin to rebuild some of those relationships that existed pre-pandemic and even further back than that. So if you can make that meeting in person, that would be great. If you, if you can't, obviously you have other commitments, but that would be a good one since we are hosting. So.
And that starts at what time?
Five-thirty. Five-thirty on the nineteenth.
And then the CSA meetings at ten.
The following morning, correct. Yep, and Craig will often preview bills, give us status updates on bills that are, that particularly affect small counties. And so. We'll be watching that. And and by the way, what we want to do is, in this meeting, is start a discussion with supervisors. That would begin to elevate the quality of our relationship with legislators. So as I was about this, what used to make small counties so powerful is that. The legislators from those small counties, they have it on their calendar before the legislative session ever began. And they came every time. This were the Jake Flakes, the Jack Browns, the the Bill Copanickies. They were there always. And as a result, they, it was viewed more as a partnership. Because we have a shared constituency. The people who vote for you, vote for them. And so they were very attentive. They would help develop, they they would develop policy together with supervisors as opposed to simply imposing them. What has happened since the pandemic and and frankly, as our parties begin to become more polarized. Is that we find ourselves often in a position where we go to our legislature and sort of beg for a few crumbs off the table. But parties are setting the agenda. Ours, our, our, our representatives are less so. But we need to build that relationship with our legislators so that it becomes more of a partnership. And that's what Craig and I have been talking about. And the discussion we would like to lead about how we can do that. So.
Are we done, Bianca?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll move into our next item of business, the consent agenda, entertain for motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as listed.
I second that motion.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion on any one of these items by any chance? Hearing none. Office load all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I savits or. Okay, we shall move into our next item of business, supervisor reports. Do you have anything to?
Just quickly, we attended. Well, last week, got back last week, the National Association of Counties Legislative Summit Conference in Washington DC. It was very, very well attended, very productive. I I sit on the. Ag and Rule Affairs National Steering Committee, and so we had some decisions to be made there. But it was, it was very good, spent a little time on on Capitol Hill and and discussing things that are important to Greenlee County to our. Our representatives back there. Senator Kelly and then as well as as Representative Siskomani. They're very receptive and took the time to sit down with us and 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 discuss our issues. So that was worth, worth the trip. In itself, but anyway, it was just a really good, really good trip and very productive. That's all that I have.
Well, I had the opportunity to learn at the NACO conference too. I'm very happy that I was able to go, able to. Attend some meetings for first timers. So it was very informative for me, an opportunity to learn and to to grow in the position. Had the opportunity to spend time with Austin and and go to a meeting there too. Where we are able to spend time together and learn how we work together and interface there. Also very happy to visit our representative and our senator. So felt it was very fruitful, very helpful. And I, like Ron, believe that those face-to-face communications are very important. They need to know that we're here and that we do want to play a role and and we are very interested in participating in the process, so. It was, it was a great experience and thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you, Will. And I I am a member of the Community Workforce and Economic Development Committee and. Some of the items that we discussed in in our committee were kind of some heated. Got, got a little heated, but there was six resolutions and they all passed. So there was a lot of information that went on there. I'm waiting for some, for them to to email me some of those presentations. And everything else has been covered with our representative and our senator that we visited, so. I will, that is the end of my report. And with nothing else to discuss, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, I know you're leaving, but sometime in later this week or early next week.